Item 6.2, and Charlie, your tack.
I'm up again.
This is Development Impact Fees.
No, I didn't. Here's the... What I do is, I just sort of did that.
It's a red line. Is this name?
No.
We've got a couple little handouts here for you.
Oh.
We should make sure there's a... A few little last-minute modifications.
Okay.
Mayor Asher and members of the City Council. As your new Community Development Director as of today...
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to now get to present to you the proposed development impact fees. This is an outline of my presentation. I'll start with a little background, then talk about the impact fee studies that were prepared and the maximum supported fees that they identify, then what the recommended impact fees are that staff is recommending, and a comparison with what other cities charge, a summary of what the various advisory, your various advisory bodies had to say about this, some amendments to the municipal code that need to be made before you can impose the fees, and then a little bit about the fiscal impact of these fees. So, background. In 2013, the council directed that impact fees be developed, so we had nexus studies prepared, impact fee studies, for affordable housing, parks, and transportation impact fees. As I'm sure you recall, on April 1st, you held a study session and you directed that these proposed impact fees be referred to the various city committees and the Planning Commission for their review and comment. These are the four impact fee studies that were prepared. We had a transportation impact fee study by Fair &amp; Peers, a parks and recreation facilities impact fee study by Wildan, a residential nexus study by Kaiser Marston, and a non-residential jobs housing nexus study also by Kaiser Marston. The last two both relate to the proposed affordable housing fee, one for residential development and the other for non-residential development. Representatives of all of these firms are here tonight to respond to any questions you may have about the impact fee studies. The Mitigation Fee Act, a California state law, has several required findings in order to establish impact fees. You have to identify the purpose and use of the fee. If the fee is proposed to finance public facilities such as the park and the transportation fees, those public facilities must be identified. You must demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the fee's use and the type of development on which it is imposed. You must demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the need for the public facility and the type of development on which the fee is imposed, and document the maximum amount of the fee. And this is what these fee studies do. In order to evaluate the proposed fees and also to compare our fees with other cities, we prepared, we came up with seven development prototypes that we then applied the proposed fees to. And those are a 100-unit multifamily rental project, 100-unit multifamily owner-occupied project, 100-unit townhome owner-occupied project, 100,000-square-foot office project, 150,000-square-foot research and development project, a retail restaurant project that would include 20,000 square feet of retail and a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, so 25,000 square feet altogether, and a 200-room hotel. So these are the seven prototypes, and you'll be seeing these several times in this presentation. So I'm not going to go through a detailed explanation of how the impact fee studies calculated these fees. You heard all of that on April 1st, so I'm just going to try to summarize what they did. We currently have, as you know, a traffic impact fee. It was adopted in 1990 and updated in 1998. In 2009, the general plan was adopted, which calls for a multimodal transportation system including public transit, pedestrians, bicycles, and automobiles. The updated fee would be used to pay for transportation improvements in all of these modes. The impact fee study includes 28 projects that are identified in the general plan, in the sustainable transportation plan, the pedestrian and bicycle plan, and other recent planning studies. The total net cost of these projects is $88 million. This cost is divided by the number of new trips that are projected from growth estimated in the general plan EIR, and that then results in a maximum supportable fee of $12,541 per trip. That amount of money is then distributed over the various land uses by applying the trip generation factors from the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. And on the screen here, you have listed some samples of the cost per unit or per square foot of the proposed traffic impact fee. This is the maximum. This is the maximum that could be charged. There's a longer list in your staff report and an even longer list in this fee study itself, but this is just to give you a flavor of what the maximum fee could be on these various land uses. The parks and recreation impact fee starts by calculating the, an existing facility standard, and that comes out to be 1.32 acres per 1,000 people. And that's done by dividing the existing park acreage by the service population, which is defined as the residents of the city and 50% of the workers, the theory being that workers use parks about half as much as residents do. Then, the cost of new parks was estimated at about $6.1 million per acre. That is then, you use the park facility standard and the cost per acre to get a per capita cost of the new facilities. That's the per-acre cost times the acres per capita existing facility standard. And what that results in is a maximum supportable fee of $8,048 per new resident and $4,024 per new worker. The worker is half the resident. You then apply that to the various land uses by using the estimated occupancy rate for the various land uses and people per use, and translate that into units or square feet, and then you come up with these numbers here. Again, this is the maximum that could be charged as calculated by this fee study. For affordable housing, as I said, we had two studies done, and it applies to rental housing only because we still have inclusionary zoning for ownership housing. They have to provide 20% median, I mean, moderate income units. So there was a residential nexus study by which the demand for affordable housing that was created, that is created by jobs that are generated because of purchases made by the new households, and then a non-residential nexus study that is based on the demand for affordable housing that's generated by the new job growth that's associated with that non-residential development. So for the residential nexus study, we calculate the gross income in a new residential project, calculate the number of jobs that would be generated by residents in this project from their purchases, and there's a computer model called IMPLAN that does that. Then those new jobs are converted to new households, then you calculate the income levels of those new households using Kaiser Marston's proprietary computer model. Then you calculate the maximum impact fee by multiplying the affordable, what's called the affordability gap, for each of the different income levels, by the number of new households at each level. And after you've done all that, you come out to a maximum supportable fee of $35,600 per new residential unit. It's a similar calculation for non-residential. You calculate the new jobs based on density assumptions for each land use. You convert that to new households. You calculate the income levels using KMA's proprietary model, and then you calculate the maximum impact fee by multiplying the affordability gap at each income level by the number of new households at each level. And that results in a maximum supportable fee per square foot for new non-residential development of these numbers that are here on the screen. So, putting all of this together and looking at our seven prototypes. The seven prototypes are listed over here on the left, and in the columns, you have the transportation fee, the parks and recreation fee, the affordable housing fee. These are the maximum supportable fees in each of these categories for these seven prototypes, and the total is shown over here. I want you to take note of these totals, because we'll be looking at this in a bar chart in just a minute. So, what is staff's recommended impact fees? We are recommending, and this is based on how much the market can bear and comparison with other cities and a lot of analysis, we're recommending that the transportation impact fee be set at 20% of the maximum that the impact fee study supports, that the parks and recreation fee be set at 25% of the maximum that the fee study supports. This will distribute the fees evenly between different types of development while limiting the total fee burden on new development. The affordable housing fee for non-residential development is recommended as a nominal $2 per square foot fee. This would be on commercial projects to minimize their impact fee capacity for, basically for the other two fees, the transportation and the park and recreation fee. Now, in terms of the affordable housing fee for residential development, rental residential, we are recommending $20,000 per unit, which is 56% of the maximum that's supported by the fee study. This is because the multifamily rental residential market is experiencing the strongest market and the most significant, most significant growth of all of the different land uses. Just by comparison, Berkeley's fee currently is $20,000 per unit. It's scheduled to go up to $28,000 after 2016. There's an option in Berkeley to provide 10% very low-income units in lieu of paying this fee. Now, according to our consultants, our recommended fee of $20,000 per unit equates to 6.9% low-income units in a project. And I just want to point out that our previous inclusionary zoning, when we did have an inclusionary requirement for rental housing, was 9% moderate income units and 6% very low-income units. This equates, I don't know what the number is exactly, but you can just look at this and see, that equates to much more than $20,000 per unit. So this is a veritable bargain by comparison. Developers will also have the option of providing 6.9% low-income units in their projects in lieu of paying the fee. So, these are staff's recommended fees. Again, we have the seven prototypes. We have the three categories of fees. You add them all up, and this is the total that you get with staff's recommendation. So again, bear these numbers in mind, because here is the bar chart that I was mentioning. The maximum fees from the first table, these are the seven prototypes here across the bottom, the maximum fees from the first table are shown here in green, and the staff recommended fees are shown here in dark blue. As you can see, they are much, much, much lower than what we could possibly be charging under these fee studies. Now, you may think, well, then we ought to charge more. Well, then you have to look at how it compares to what other cities charge, so you don't go too crazy with, you know, charging too much in fees. Residential rental here, of course, is the highest as a percentage, still less than half when you add up all the fees together, and then the others are quite a bit lower than that. Now, what does it look like when we compare to other cities? We want to look at total development fees, including plan review, permits, impact fees, and other fees that are related to development, related to getting a building permit, planning permit for your project. So, we want to compare our total impact fees, our total development fees rather, both without and then with the proposed impact fees to other cities' total development fees. But there's a couple of caveats I just want to point out here, and this is in response to some of the comments we've been hearing. First, other cities' fees are a moving target, because many, we've, you know, talked to our colleagues in other jurisdictions, and they're all talking about raising their impact fees. So if we set the bar at what other cities charge right now, you might find that you're left behind in the future when their fees go way up. So that's just a caveat. Secondly, we've heard a lot about the P-Bid and other kinds of costs that property owners have. I'm not dismissing that. Those are valid concerns, and they are something you should take into consideration, but I just want to emphasize that those are not development fees. So considering non-development costs such as property tax assessments is kind of mixing apples and oranges. Other cities also have assessments and other charges, and it would be really, it would really complicate the analysis to try to include all of the other costs that property owners have. So we are simply trying to compare development fees to development fees, so that we're looking at apples and apples. So again, we have the seven prototypes. We have three on this slide, three on the next slide, and then hotels on the last slide. We've compared ourselves for the residential to Berkeley, Oakland, and Walnut Creek. And here we have the permit fees in blue, the plan review fees in red, and the existing impact fees are in this kind of greenish color. So as you can see, Emeryville's over here on the left in each of these. We are below all of our comparators in for residential. When you add our proposed impact fees, of course, multifamily rental residential shoots way up. We would be still below Berkeley, which by the way, as I said, is supposed to increase in 2016, so this bar would be even higher. Oakland, we have heard, is considering increasing fees, so, but as this goes, we would be quite a bit higher than them. And Walnut Creek, we would be a little bit higher than. For multifamily owner-occupied, they would only pay the park and traffic fees, not the housing fees, so they go up a little bit. They're still higher than Oakland, and Berkeley, not nearly as high as Walnut Creek. Actually, in this one, it looks like Oakland and Emeryville would be about the same for townhomes. Looking at office R&amp;D and retail mix, for R&amp;D, we've swapped out Richmond for Oakland, because Richmond is more of a competitor with us for R&amp;D than Oakland is, but for the others, we've kept Oakland as the comparator. So again, here's the bars. We are below all these other cities and all of these three prototypes. If you add our recommended impact fees, we're right up here, you know, with the rest of them. In this one, we're slightly lower than Oakland and a little bit above Berkeley and Walnut Creek. In this one, we're a little bit below Berkeley and above Richmond, and, oh, I guess we've included Alameda here as opposed to Walnut Creek. And then, for retail mix, we would be a little bit higher than Berkeley, a little bit and a little lower than Oakland and Walnut Creek. Again, just to emphasize, these are moving targets. Those other bars could be going up in the future. For hotels, compared to Berkeley, Oakland, and Walnut Creek, this would be our impact fee, we would still be lower than all three. What did the advisory bodies have to say? The Economic Development Advisory Committee talked about this on April 2nd. They unanimously passed two motions to set the fees materially lower than competitive cities, and that the Emery Go-Round bus yard should be at the top of the project list for the transportation fee. The Housing Committee, also on April 2nd, unanimously passed a motion supporting the staff recommendation for the affordable housing fees. The Park and Recreation Committee, on April 16th, unanimously passed a motion supporting the staff recommendation with the caveat that the fee should be set with sensitivity to other costs such as the P-Bid. And the Planning Commission considered this on April 24th. They did not take a vote or pass a motion. There was no consensus among the commissioners. They had a variety of opinions. Several believe the fee should be lower than comparable cities to maintain our competitive edge, especially since we don't have a BART station. Other commissioners supported the staff recommendation and felt that the rental residential market is strong enough to bear the proposed affordable housing fees. Several commissioners were concerned about the scalability issue and the effect of fees on smaller developments, and we can talk more about that if you wish, but we have a problem by differentiating different-sized developments and still complying with state law. And all the commissioners seem to feel that the fee should be reviewed on an annual basis, which they have to be anyway. Now, moving to the amendments to the municipal code. Before the council can adopt any new fees, the municipal code has to be amended in order to establish regulations and procedures for them, so-called enabling legislation. So we are proposing two amendments to the planning regulations. First would be to modify Article 4 of Chapter 5, which is currently called the Affordable Housing Set-Aside Program. It would be renamed the Affordable Housing Program, take the word "set aside" out, and that's for the affordable housing fee. And for all the other fees, we would add a new Article 19 to Chapter 5 entitled Development Impact Fees. That would be for parks and transportation fees now, and it could also apply to any other impact fees that we choose to impose in the future. The Planning Commission reviewed these amendments on June 26th, just last Thursday. They voted five to one to recommend city council approval. The no vote was Commissioner Gunkel, and his no vote was because of the proposed reduction of the housing threshold from 30 units to 10 units. He felt that 10 was too low. He thought that would discourage development, and this only applies to condominiums, but he thinks the 10 should be higher. So that's why he voted against these code amendments. So just to briefly summarize what these amendments are, the modifications to the Affordable Housing Program, the title would be changed, as I said, and the same change would be made throughout the article. The unit threshold, again, for condominiums would be lowered from 30 to 10. That's where the 20% moderate income units would kick in, at 10 units instead of 30 as it is now. And by the way, I have a table here comparing us to other cities in the Bay Area. In Alameda County, we are the highest, and I think we're the third-highest in the Bay Area. So other cities' thresholds are anywhere from 0 to 5 to 7 to 10. So 10 is certainly not out of line with other cities. This amendment would grant the authority and process for the city to establish and collect fees on rental residential and non-residential projects. There is an alternative compliance, and I want to correct something that was in the staff report. I believe it said that this could be negotiated. For non-residential development, it can be negotiated, and it requires Planning Commission approval. For residential development, there actually is this number in the ordinance, 6.9% low-income units can be provided instead of paying the fee. And one of the handouts that you should have just received is this red line of Section 94509, and this is for the non-residential fee, where if they want to do, if they want to provide the actual low-income, or the actual affordable units instead of paying the fee, currently it's worded that the Planning Commission would approve that. We believe that the city council should approve that. This was written by outside counsel, and we didn't, frankly, didn't catch this, but we think it should say "city council," not "Planning Commission." So we're recommending that change to this ordinance. The amendment also would establish an affordable housing fund to put the fees into, and it would specify that the use of these fees would be obviously used to provide affordable housing. The new development impact fee, Article 19, again, would establish the authority for these fees and specify that they're to be used to mitigate impacts of development on the city's ability to provide public facilities. The types of fees are to be categorized into separate types, including but not limited to transportation, parks, recreation. There can be additional fees in the future, such as a government facilities fee, for example, if the city ever decided to do that. It indicates that the calculation of the fees is basically to be done by one of these impact fee studies that establishes the nexus, and then it's established by, the actual fee is established by a resolution of the city council. Payment of the fees generally would be due at the issuance of a building permit. However, that can be deferred until the final inspection or certificate of occupancy. However, what the fee would then be, that would then be due would be whatever was in effect at the time. So if the developer opted to defer payment until their certificate of occupancy, and then subsequently the fees went up, they have to pay the higher fee when they get their CFO, except residential projects, which are exempted from that provision by state law. So we can't raise the fee on residential projects. But non-residential, if they defer and the fee goes up, they have to pay the higher fee. The city obviously can adjust the fee from time to time to reflect updated information about the costs of the projects that are to be funded by it. There are certain exemptions for residential remodeling, and also if an applicant can demonstrate any kind of basis in local, state, or federal law for such an exemption, then they would be eligible for an exemption. There is a provision for refunds if a project is abandoned. There's also, and a number of developers are very interested in this, a provision for fee credits. This is where if the applicant is building as a part of their project, one of the facilities that is specifically identified as to be funded by the fee, then they can apply for a credit of the fee against the project that they would be building. Now, they wouldn't necessarily get 100% of it, but they would get a portion of it, and this decision has to be made on a case-by-case basis by the city council. So they would have to come to you and explain why they think they should get a credit to not have to pay the fee, because they are, after all, they are building something that the fee is going to pay for. There's also a procedure for protests. If somebody feels that the fee is unjust, or they shouldn't have to pay it for whatever reason, there's an administrative proceeding process through the planning director or community development director, and thereafter, an independent hearing officer. So that's the two amendments to the municipal code. Now, concerning the fiscal impact of these fees, just kind of crystal balling and looking out into the next five years, how much revenue could we expect? Currently, we have 13 projects in the development pipeline. There are more details about these 13 projects are attached to your staff report. They total a little over 2,000 residential units, about 170 hotel rooms, about 248,000 square feet of lab space, 77,000 square feet of office, and 131,000 square feet of retail space. So if you apply the staff recommended fees to these projects, you would generate almost $5 million in transportation fees, which would be sufficient to pay for a little over 5% of the projects on the list. Almost $9 million in park and rec fees, which would be enough to build one and a half acres of new parks, and almost $42 million in the affordable housing fee, which would be enough to get us about 220 affordable units. So total of about $55.5 million generated by these fees over the next five years if all these 13 projects come to pass. The staff recommendation is that you take public testimony about the proposed development impact fees tonight. Then after a motion to read by title only and taking public testimony, you adopt the first reading of the amendment adding Article 19, Development Impact Fees. And also, after a motion to read by title only and taking public testimony, that you adopt the first reading of the other ordinance, re-titling and amending Article 4, the Affordable Housing Program. I just want to clarify the next steps here. I think there may be a little bit of confusion on some people's parts that the city council is actually establishing impact fees tonight. That is not the case. So at next, the next city council meeting on July 15th, you will be requested to pass these two ordinances of enabling legislation on second reading, and then to pass three resolutions establishing the impact fees for affordable housing, park and recreation facilities, and transportation facilities. That's in two weeks. That's not tonight. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Questions from council first, before we hear from the public?
Mayor, excuse me. Charlie, can you clarify the one revision on the Development Impact Fee Ordinance? Thank you.
Yes, where is that?
Section 9-5.1913, subsection G.
Thank you. There was another revision that you also have on the dais to the fee credit. This is in the proposed new Article 19. That is just to clarify that, basically, that the prevailing wage provisions for an applicant who agrees to build a project in exchange for getting a credit from the fee, that that does then not mean that prevailing wage would apply to their entire development project. It would only apply to the public facility that they would be building. That's basically what this language says.
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, it says it in a more legalistic way than that, but that's what it means.
All right, let's hear from the public.
Don't listen to it. If somebody comes up with an idea to change your mind, don't listen to that person, and instead, do what the staff recommends. So take public testimony, but put your, you know, listen to the radio, whatever, while the public is speaking, because what they say should have no consequence, and instead, you should just do what the staff recommends. An absurd thing. Once again, I defer to the, I'd like to tell the city manager to change that moving forward, please. It's absurd. Okay. Tonight, you were told by the staff, same staff, by the way, that recommended you let Madison Marquette developer off the hook to the tune of $6 million that the grand jury thought was a bad idea. It's the same staff. They told you to, that we should have a hearing to people, to developers, for instance, like John Nady, who doesn't want to have to pay the fee, and you should, we should have to, the taxpayers should have to pay for, have a hearing for him. And there, if you noticed what he said, Mr. Bryant said, "There's nothing really of substance about the hearing." But I tell you, I sat in a hearing that was set up by the Urban Forestry Ordinance, conducted by the Building Works, Building, I'm sorry, the Public Works Department, because pulty homes had cut down every... pulte homes had cut down every single tree on Fifty-Ninth Street illegally. And then I complained, and so there was a hearing, because the Urban Forestry Ordinance mandated that there be a hearing. So I said, I think that the developer should pay for those illegally cut-down trees like the ordinance says he should. The developer said he didn't want to pay. And so the, Mr. Kaufman of the Public Works, listen, at the hearing, listened to what I said, and then just ruled without any quantifying or qualifying, no, I deem, I Maurice Kaufman deemed that the pulte homes should not have to pay a fine, and that was the end of it. So this hearing that we're talking about tonight, I don't think, you know, you need to find out more about this. There needs to be protections, the people need to be protected. And you need to find out about what Mr. Bryant is talking about regarding this hearing in the ordinance. Okay. Also, Mr. Bryant had this very complex formula about how to determine these fees, but what he didn't talk about is Emeryville specifically. What are we really talking about here? How much land are we talking about that is going to be impacted? Or can we get impact fees on moving forward? Well, the answer is almost nothing. This town has been almost completely developed, very little fallow land left, very little, as a percentage of our town, it's a very small amount that we can collect these fees on. And so you should plug, I think you should plug that into your figures.
Your time is up.
And that we should charge more.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Hi, Ken.
Hi. Just want to make a comment about the fees. You know, I think it would have been nice to have a task force of the developers and people that are interested, and see what they have to offer. I mean, rather than just, you know, deciding on a fee, and some projects make it and some don't. I mean, sure, they have a chance to come here, but if you put them together, you might get some ideas that you'd at least know what they're willing to pay, what they could afford to pay. The comparisons made by the staff, you know, there's a hundred and one cities in this region, and I go to all the A-Bag meetings, there's lots of different ways fees are collected, like Redwood City collects one fee, and they figure out how it's assigned. There's a lot of other ways that could potentially, this could potentially be done, that should probably be looked at. And so if you want to look at other cities that just charge fees in the same way, then you're making a comparison. But do we really compare to these neighboring cities? Have they had any real development? They haven't really had any development. So if we want to be like them, then we won't have anything either. To sock it to the projects that are in line, that's kind of, that's kind of not really fair. But you should at least put them together and get their input, at least have a meeting with all the developers and see what they have to say before you adopt the fees. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Mayor Asher. Steven Keller, resident of Pacific Park Plaza, and I'm before you tonight to encourage you to be more reasonable and prudent in your actions tonight. I'm here to echo and reiterate what several of your appointed committees and some planning commissioners have recommended to you, and that's to charge a lower rate of impact fees than has been suggested by the staff. By charging fees that are too high, among many negative things that I feel could result, the most detrimental would be overall housing affordability. Our housing cost in Emeryville is already so high that we are seeing an increase in rental vacancies due to the increase in rental rates. Many young people, some with families, are moving away, and I can give you three examples who have all moved to Oakland because of the rates of rent in Emeryville. While some see these fees as a way to encourage development of for-sale or condominium projects, we know that there are more serious circumstances that are causing this problem in the market, and overcharging rental units for this is not going to fix that problem. An additional fact we have to keep in mind while increasing these fees, this current cost of development in Emeryville, excluding the Sherwin-Williams site and site B, nearly every development project, every development site we have either needs site remediation, demolition, or both. So those are added costs that a developer is going to have to cover. In order to make the developments, projects viable, most developers will have to make cuts or lower the quality of their project in order to make up these costs that we're going to burden it with. Beyond these reasons, to justify caution for the rates we increase, there's also the consideration of how restricted these funds are. These funds can be used, the funds we're collecting will be used for very specific items in very specific ways, with little or no flexibility. And you think we've now lost redevelopment, this is money we used to give developers to build here, we've now taken, that's been taken away, and now we're going to charge them fees on top of that. So we're kind of giving them a double whammy. I just feel like the fees, as they're recommended by the staff, are akin to killing our cash cow, when instead we should be looking for the goose that lays the golden eggs, and that such a goose does exist. Thank you.
I think you, as a council, have noted that both downtown Oakland and downtown Berkeley have significant development happening right now. And they have a much higher fee schedule than we currently have. And we have lost, as a percentage of our city, a significant income source. The redevelopment agency was so major in proportion to us than any other city in California, maybe a few in Southern California, might have had the same scale of redevelopment. But the, in the Bay Area, Emeryville was in that position. And certainly in San Francisco, boy, their costs and fees are dramatically higher, and you'll note the volume of development happening there. I don't think we should think of ourselves as being in a deficit frame of mind for our land value and our develop, development possibilities going forward. I think we will be very competitive with the fee structure that the staff has recommended. And I think it's prudent for our economic stability going forward that we have these impact fees. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Hi, I'm Felix Hau Young. I'm a senior project manager at EH Housing. We are affordable housing developer. I'm here in support of the impact fees. However, it's decided at the end by council, the amount thereof. I think Emeryville is in a very special location where the market is extremely strong, and you have a history of development here. And the longer that you wait in terms of implementing an impact fee, the longer that potential revenue stream is being deflected away from the ability to provide more affordable housing. I think your consultant, Marston Kirsten, aptly pointed out that the market will charge what it can when it sets its rental rates, and therefore, as long as it's feasible in this very strong market currently, that I think developments will still occur here. And at the same time, you will be provided a potential source for developing additional housing set aside for lower incomes. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, and the audience. My name is Pilar Lorenzana Campo, and I am here on behalf of an organization called the Nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California. In short, NPH is a membership organization. Our members are about seven hundred and fifty affordable housing developers, policymakers, as well as community-based advocacy organizations. So I'm here today to voice our strong support for staff-recommended fees that are included in your staff memo. I specifically want to, I specifically wanted to address three specific things. We strongly support staff's suggestion that the City Council, at a next future meeting, adopt a twenty thousand dollar impact fee for multifamily residential, noting that the maximum allowed is actually thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. So I think that this is a very good feasible fee. We also want to support the fact, the fact that an ordinance will enforce the said fee on projects that are size ten units and greater. I think this compares quite nicely with the rest of the cities across the region as well, not just in the East Bay. The one minor suggestion that we would suggest that council take into consideration is that, given the strong market for development in Emeryville, that's both cited in the staff report and in the Nexus study authored by KMA, we would suggest that the council consider a four-dollar-per-square-foot commercial linkage fee, as opposed to the two-dollar-per-square-foot commercial linkage fee. As a counterpoint, I will offer that many, many cities across the region are either in the process of undertaking Nexus studies to implement a fee, or to revise or increase their fee. For example, the city of Mountain View, which I would like to compare, also has a very strong market. They actually charge, right now, they adopted a fee in two thousand and thirteen that puts them at ten dollars per square foot, and they're considering actually increasing that because of the strength of their market. And so lastly, I want to leave you with a little bit of data about why this housing impact fee is really quite important. The UC Davis Center, the UC Davis Center for Regional Change compared data on the number of workers that make minimum wage versus the number of housing units that are affordable to those minimum wage earners. For the city of Emeryville, there are seven point eight minimum wage jobs for every single affordable house, home. So what that really means is that-
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. There are seven point eight minimum wage jobs for every single home that's available within the city limits. So if you are a minimum wage earner, you're competing against six point eight other people for that one home. So the data from the state shows that the city has a deficit of fifteen hundred and fifty-eight affordable rental, rental homes, given that the city has more than three thousand minimum wage jobs. So the proposal to do the impact fee at twenty thousand, the proposal to do the impact fees collectively will result in forty-two million dollars available for the next five years, given the projects that are in your pipeline. And if you are able to take those funds and leverage them against federal tax credits, you stand to gain between two hundred and twenty affordable units, or we think probably even more than that, which will make a significant dent to your deficit of, again, eleven hundred and fifty-eight homes. So I just want to leave you with that. Thank you very much for your leadership on this issue, and for, I want to commend staff for the work that they've done. Thank you.
Excuse me. For those that have spoken at the public hearing, it would be helpful if you can sign in, unless you wish to be anonymous, so I can get the spelling of your name correct for the record. Thank you.
You can just give that to the city clerk.
And I will follow suit. Yes, thank you.
Or you can give me the yellow, either one.
I'd be happy.
I'm Tim Frank, and I'm the director of the Center for Sustainable Neighborhoods, and we support policies and projects that help build sustainable communities and regions. And we're pleased to actually support the staff recommendation. We think that the twenty thousand dollar fee for affordable housing is appropriate. We appreciate the level of thought that went into establishing that and actually comparing it with the neighbors. We think that's critically important. And would note that actually, if you look at the results in Berkeley, that the market's quite strong there, and it's showing itself well. People are, there are a number of projects in the pipeline, and they do not seem to be afraid of the fee. And as you noted, there is actually a scheduled increase coming. So the fee you are looking at tonight is actually something we think is actually appropriate. We think it'll be a huge benefit to Emeryville, that we desperately need these units, and this will be a way to actually fund the development of projects that will provide Emeryville the resources that it needs. The one thing that I would actually like to recommend is a, something slightly at variance with staff, is in fact exactly what Pilar has actually recommended by increasing the commercial fee. We do believe in the idea of many hands make light work, and we think that it's important to have a strong component of contribution from the commercial side to help, in addition to what you're getting from the residential developers, and we think that's appropriate. So thank you very much.
Anyone else to be heard?
Yeah.
My name is Jeffrey Levin. I'm the policy director with East Bay Housing Organizations. We are a nonprofit, membership-based organization doing education and advocacy work on affordable housing issues throughout the East Bay. We've been doing that work for about thirty years now. First, I'd just like to thank the staff and your consultants for a really fine job. These are really solid Nexus studies that will provide you with the basis for fees that are both legally defensible and economically feasible, and both of those are very important. In general, we support the staff recommendations. Like many cities, Emeryville has lost important tools for affordable housing. The loss of redevelopment has cost the state one billion dollars a year in affordable housing funds throughout the state. That's coupled with legal challenges to inclusionary zoning, so that you no longer are able to apply your inclusionary requirement to rental housing. So we really need to look for new tools to meet the demand, particularly for rental housing. The housing market in the region and in the city is extremely strong. I think it's very clear that new development can absorb these fees. They're not excessive, but the need for affordable housing is greater than ever. On the non-residential side, as the last two speakers have said, we also would encourage you to consider setting the housing impact fee on non-residential development at four dollars a square foot. New commercial development creates new demand for housing, including affordable housing. Emeryville already has a substantial jobs-housing imbalance, and as you create more jobs without creating more housing, you create all kinds of other problems in terms of traffic and pollution and greenhouse gas emissions, as people have to commute in rather than being able to live in the community where they work. Reasonable fees do not discourage development. We see that in, you know, the hundreds of cities that have reasonable impact fees. They do not increase the price of housing. Housing will be sold for whatever the market rate is. I think it's simply incorrect to think that developers are somehow charging less than they could, and a fee comes along, and now they're somehow able to charge something more than that. Frankly, at the rate that housing prices are going up, within a matter of six to twelve months, the market will increase enough to increase most of these fees. So I think you really need to take that into account. Lastly, I know there's a lot of concern about being competitive with other cities, and other speakers have talked about other cities also increasing their fees. Tonight, Alameda is considering increasing their impact fees, actually using the same consultant for the Nexus study that you folks did. Fremont is in the middle of updating their Nexus study. The city of Oakland, which has long resisted development impact fees, other than a small commercial jobs-housing linkage fee, is about to release an RFP for a very large-scale Nexus study looking at transportation, public infrastructure, and affordable housing. And Walnut Creek has also expressed interest in looking at increasing their fees, particularly in their priority development areas. So I think even with the proposed increases, you're going to be extremely competitive, and will continue to be a strong attractor of development, as you have been for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak?
My name is Bruce Storfman. I'm working on the Sherwin-Williams site, and obviously will be impacted by these increased fees. First, I just wanted to say, I was glad that San Francisco was taken out as a comp from your April first hearing, when it was mentioned. I just read a report that was showing that some of the recent condominium projects that have just opened are now charging upwards of twelve hundred dollars a square foot for their housing currently. Housing condominium prices in Emeryville are down in the low four hundreds per square foot, so it's three times the cost in San Francisco. It's a much different market. Likewise, rents are two to three times what the rents are here. Our big issue in the Bay Area as a whole is the fact that we have many more jobs than we have housing units, and jobs are being created at a rate of two to three times the rate of new homes. Providing any kind of, or providing any kind of increased hurdles to creating new housing, it doesn't necessarily stop the housing from occurring, it just delays it. And that is one of the issues that is going to continue to resonate. So again, while we understand the fees, we aren't here to necessarily take a position one way or another, we would make some recommendations, specifically, number one, that with regard to park fees, that what we've seen in other communities that has been very successful is that there's actually a recognition of private and public open space that's being created, and there's, as opposed to discretionary levels, there's actually a formulaic determination of credits based upon that, and I would encourage the city to be considering that. And I- And I guess taking that a step further, I mean, I think that the city would be well-advised above and beyond the framework for its public parks that it wants to see, to look to private developers, also to promote other public open spaces that could be used. And one way to do that is through a fee structure that recognizes the creation of those spaces. Finally, I'd just like to add that the city of Oakland, although there's been much discussion about it, they are your neighboring city, fees are comparable to where you're at today. And in the near term, they're not going up. So, and I'll take it a step further. Fees are higher in Berkeley, there was a lot of development there. Fees are higher in San Francisco, there's a lot of development there. Fees are very low in Oakland, there's very little development. So I'm not sure if there's necessarily that correlation, but I would just want to clarify that the fees are lower in Oakland, and there actually are a number of projects that are going to be moving forward there shortly. Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? No? Okay. Want to hear from council? Or entertain a motion?
Any discussion?
That, I said, do you, can we hear from council or entertain a motion?
Well, I'd just like to say I really appreciate all the comments that came forward on this issue. It's a serious issue and one that the council has really got to consider strongly with the loss of redevelopment, as a couple of the speakers mentioned. To operate the city and to really move forward on capital projects, we have to find new sources. And so I thank all the members that came forward with the comments. I'd also like to thank the staff, because I believe, as many of the public said, these studies, these nexus studies were very thoughtfully done, they have a wealth of information in them. I believe that they're going to provide a very firm foundation if we move forward with these, with these impact fees. That being said, we are not discussing the rate tonight. All we're discussing is setting up the framework for the impact fees. That's my understanding. Is that correct, Charlie?
Well, yeah, I think you can discuss the rate, if you wish, but you won't be setting the rate until your next meeting.
Right. Okay. So with that, I would like to ask to read by title only the development impact fees.
Okay, just make a quick comment.
Sure.
You know, I really love it that Emeryville's not compared to Mountain View, because Mountain View is the home of Google, and Google has created this, housing was one of the companies that created this house. So I meant at $10 a square foot, that's probably really cheap for them, and they probably should be paying a lot more. But I think there's a balance that we have to have here, too. It's like, we're talking about affordable housing, but it also, we have to think about having jobs in this town and having good jobs. So I think there's a balance that we have to walk here. It's one thing to have all this housing and then seeing everybody leave the town to go to Mountain View, but I'd prefer to have an opportunity to have people live here and work in this town. So I think there has to be a lot of balance when it comes to these fees.
Bruce?
I want to make a comment also, which is that people have talked about the elimination of redevelopment as being a precipitating factor of why we're looking at new funding. And I, I just want to say something about, there were a lot of comments about the market, and what the market does will, will affect what we do in terms of what we can collect by how our land is used. And what redevelopment afforded us an opportunity to do is to push against and to try to encourage where the market wasn't willing to go. And we poured millions of millions of dollars into San Pablo Avenue and the part that is within the Emeryville city limits, and it looks, and it feels a little bit different than north of our, our city and south of our city. And that's because people weren't willing to invest in San Pablo Avenue, but we decided that was an important piece of, of our city to do that. What we've lost, and I want to make this, I just want to name it for what it is, is we've lost a tool where we don't have to rely on market forces and developers earning, you know, a profitable deal for them in order to, or profitable enough in order for them to come here. And what you're seeing tonight is the city council faced with a decision about just having to be part of the, the regular market forces that impact for good or for hard times. And we've seen the housing bubble bust, bubble burst, and we've seen boom times until the dot-com bust happened here. So we have this, at this point in, in our history, that we need to look at this, that we don't have a tool left separate from, or at least separate enough from, regular market forces. Then we are combined with just our own geographic constraints, and there are advantages to, to where the city of Emeryville is located, and there's disadvantages. And everywhere, there's a BART station, which we don't have. Transit-oriented development, which has been, has brought a lot of housing right into, onto transit hubs, have been beneficial in virtually every community that, that has done TOD, transit-oriented development. We don't have that as part of our makeup to try to, so then what we're left with is freeway off-ramps and how easy we are to that, to developing close to, to that form of transportation. So we're kind of behind the eight ball here about how we develop with market forces based on the infrastructure that, that we're given. And we can tinker with the amounts and the fees or whatever, but I just felt like I wanted to put a larger context to how we're looking at all of this, because this is not a rosy picture, and, and in good economic times, you know, the ship rises, and when it, when it isn't good, then everybody suffers. But we did lose a tool that could help private development go where it didn't want to go initially. And we see some lasting benefit on San Pablo Avenue of that. And there are other places we can look in town where the effort of redevelopment had a lasting, and I think, positive influence. So those are just general comments. It's not around the specifics of anything that we're going to be adopting here. The one specific that I do want to talk about, that the housing committee acknowledged, was dropping our unit requirement from 30 to 10 makes an awful lot of sense. And I think the dissenting planning commissioner, if he'd known what happens in neighboring cities and would have, would not have objected to lowering that. So those are my comments.
I, I also have some things to say. I want to say that even though RDA is no longer here, it was a tool to bring us to exactly this moment, right? That the way that we developed and added value in Emeryville is something that is long-lasting. It's not just centered upon those individual developments, it's not just for that one moment in time. It's teed us up for this very moment to acknowledge that we're a desirable place to live, right? And, and to do the things that we really want to do as a council, to make sure that we have a balance between jobs and housing, and then also to address what is an absolute emergency in terms of affordable housing. We can't wait on affordable housing. And so the impact fees, and they're, they're not going to get us all the way there in terms of what we, what we need to do, but this is something that we need to be doing, that everybody in the region needs to be doing. It's the responsible and right thing. And I was glad to see people talking about raising the rate a little bit for the commercial developments. What was striking to me in reading the fee study was, even though we have these very firm kind of calculations around the nexus, they also acknowledge that commercial developments bring in security staff, people who clean those buildings after hours, and that it's really always an underestimate of those second-shift workers as well that just aren't figured into the math. So I, I look forward to, to implementing the impact fees. I think it's, it's the right next step, and I think it's, redevelopment did exactly what it was supposed to do. And so here we are, and Emeryville is a wonderful place to live, and we should draw people toward these resources that we've invested so much time and thought into. And so with that-
You have a motion to read by title only.
I'll second it.
Did you? Okay, thanks, Kurt.
So this is on Article 19, and it's with the amendment that staff recommended.
Correct. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville adding Article 19 to Chapter 5 of Title IX of the City of Emeryville Planning Regulations titled Development Impact Fees and repealing, repealing, excuse me, Article 3 of Chapter 2 of Title 3 of the City of Emeryville Municipal Code titled Traffic Facilities Impact Fee Fund.
Move the ordinance. I need a second. Step up, guys.
I was waiting for somebody on the side.
Anyone opposed?
No.
No. Okay.
Wait. Should we have roll call?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember Breitman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Aye.
Move to read by title only, ordinance Affordable Housing Program.
I'll second that, Nora.
Again, with the staff-recommended modification.
With the revision, yes.
Yeah. You want to post?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Councilmember Breitman.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember West is excused. Vice Mayor Atkins.
Aye.
And Mayor Asher.
Ooh, aye. Okay. All right. And in policy items, we're-